Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May 6th Board of Commissioners meeting. Thanks to everyone for joining us. I believe we have our introductory video. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes from our sheriff's deputies on their way out the meeting this evening, and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. Move to our consent agenda. Does anyone from the public or any commissioners have questions or comments about this evening's consent agenda? All right, there being none. Yes, Commissioner Moore.
I'd like to make a motion at the close of that. If we can move some of our presentations around to adjust for public comment, Nurses' Week proclamation on down through the annual report of the Buncombe County Child Protection Team.
So you would like to make a motion to move Nurses' Week, Air Quality, Annual Airport Report, annual report of Buncombe County Child Protection Team ahead of public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Second motion.
All right. All right. All in favor to approve the consent agenda as presented and the agenda with the change? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will proceed. All right, the reason that has been changed, we have a number of pages of signups, and we want to let our guests who are here presenting receive their proclamations. All right, so let's go ahead and move into our Nurses' Week proclamation being presented by our own RN Commissioner Horton.
Good evening. It is an honor to present this Nursing, National Nurses' Week proclamation for May the 6th through 12th of 2025. Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession and serve as the backbone of our healthcare system. And whereas nurses provide compassionate care, advocating for patients, and ensuring safe outcomes. And whereas Buncombe County's Public Health Dedicated Team, including clinical nurses, care coordination nurses, nurse family partnership nurses, communicable disease nurses, mobile team nurses, and quality improvement assurance nurses, and public health nurses embody the principles of ethical practice within their profession and amplify unwavering dedication, compassion, and respect as they provide essential care. And whereas public health nurses in Buncombe County play a critical role to infection, disease prevention, including administering vaccines and educating patients about immunizations. And whereas nurses facilitate seamless transitions of care and play a critical role in care coordination, their expertise significantly enhances outcomes for at-risk pregnancies and at-risk children. And whereas our nurses play a pivotal role in transforming lives, especially for vulnerable first-time mothers, families, and their babies. Nurse family partnership nurses extend their impact beyond clinical settings, providing personalized care through home visits, education, and support. Their unwavering commitment bridges gaps in healthcare access. And whereas our nurses extend their impact beyond the confines of clinics, actively reaching out to communities through public health innovative mobile team, this dedicated team embodies the spirit of compassion, resilience, and adaptability as they provide essential care to those who might otherwise be underserved. And whereas communicable disease nurses are pivotal in reducing outbreaks and play a critical role in safeguarding public health. And whereas nurses hold the distinction of being the most trusted profession in the United States, their unwavering commitment to care, compassion, and ethical practice has consistently earned them this esteemed position for 20 consecutive years here in the United States. Whereas Buncombe County Health and Human Services and its clinical services team, services programs, recognize the observance of Nurses' Week. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May 6th through the 12th of 2025 as National Nurses' Week here in Buncombe County. The Board recognizes the hard work and dedication of public health nurses and asks that all residents join us in honoring those who tirelessly work to improve health and safety in our community. Let's show our appreciation not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. On behalf of the incredible nurses who serve our community with compassion and skill, we extend our gratitude for your proclamation recognizing Nurses' Week 2025. Nursing is more than a profession. It is a calling to serve, to heal, and to uplift our community in times of need. Your recognition not only honors the hard work of nurses, but also reinforces our essential role in safeguarding the health and well-being of our community. We comfort families in their most vulnerable moments, advocate for the well-being of our patients, and navigate challenges with grace. Thank you for championing public health, and on behalf of every nurse who has made a difference, thank you for your support. Your support empowers and reminds us that our work is seen, appreciated, and valued. Thank you.
Thank you to our public health nurses and nurses all across Buncombe County. We are incredibly grateful for the service that you provide and the care you give your patients. And Parker Sloan is providing the Air Quality Awareness Week proclamation.
It's Air Quality Awareness Week. The United States Environmental Protection Agency has designated May 5th through 9th, 2025, as National Air Quality Awareness Week, and the theme this year is Stay Air Aware. And whereas air quality continues to improve in Buncombe County with ground level ozone and fine particulate levels down 28 and 60% since 2000, and whereas the Asheville-Buncombe Air Quality Agency actively monitors ground level ozone and fine particles and other measures of air quality and works with state and federal partners, businesses, and residents to ensure the air is clean. And whereas the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality provides daily county-level air quality forecasts disseminated by the online air quality portal, AB Air Quality, and local media to help residents make informed choices about their outdoor activities. And whereas young children and older adults are at higher risk of experiencing health-related problems from breathing ground level ozone and particle pollution, and whereas outdoor visibility has improved since the year 2000, with visibility on our hasiest days improving by over 30 miles. And whereas local governments in Buncombe County are leaders in clean air management, adopting and implementing smoke and air pollution ordinances as early as 1916 and 1947 to address air pollution challenges while recognizing the importance of clean air, and whereas Buncombe County and the City of Asheville entered into an interlocal agreement to create the Asheville-Buncombe Air Quality Agency to develop and administer an air quality program in their respective jurisdictions. And whereas Buncombe County's strategic plan includes a vision of high-quality air, water, farmland, and renewable energy for future generations, and the county has set a goal of reaching 100% renewable energy for county operations by 2030 and for the entire community by 2042. And whereas Buncombe County has adopted a sustainable fleet policy and energy efficiency standards for new county buildings to reduce pollution. And whereas climate change impacts on air quality are expected to result in increases in ground level ozone, fine particles, wildfire smoke, and airborne allergens. And whereas tropical storm Helene in 2024 has left an unprecedented amount of debris in our community that has resulted in an increase in open burning and risk of wildfires that emit fine particles into the air and are expected to impact air quality for several years, underscoring the need to increase air quality awareness. And whereas Buncombe County, AB Air Quality, NCDQ, and the U.S. EPA support education and outreach efforts to encourage all residents to access and understand the air quality index as a tool to protect their health and take positive actions in their daily lives to help improve air quality in their community. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May 5th through 9th, 2025 as Buncombe County Air Quality Awareness Week. Residents are encouraged to promote air quality and air quality awareness in their communities by taking simple steps to reduce emissions, including avoiding outdoor open burning when possible, taking fewer car trips or using alternative forms of transportation, replacing vehicles with more fuel-efficient technologies, lower emitting technologies, replacing gas-powered lawn equipment with electric or battery-operated equipment, implementing energy efficiency measures at home and work, and using products that emit less volatile organic compounds. This is the sixth day of May 2025. Signed, Chair Amanda Edwards.
Just like to thank the commissioners on behalf of our air quality team and our Board for the recognition of Air Quality Awareness Week and all that you are doing for our community in support of our work. Also want to let residents know that there's a lot of good data on the AirNow website, including some additional monitors and sensors that have been put out in the community in response to Helene and additional burning and fine particles that we're expecting. So there's a lot of good information out there on the AirNow Fire and Smoke map, and we have some articles on our website. Feel free to reach out with any questions or concerns, and thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you, Ashley. We appreciate the work that you and your team do to help support the goals that we've set forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for our annual airport report, and President and CEO Lou Blighweis from the Asheville Report is with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight to give you an update on where we were for 2024. A lot of our information that I'll be talking about tonight is in our annual operating report that's been provided to you, a hard copy to you. Please take a look at it at your leisure. From an air service perspective, we had seven airlines operating last year, and those were Allegiant, American, Delta, JetBlue, Sun Country, and United, sorry, six. And we had 27 nonstop destinations from Asheville. I'm not going to go through the whole list of 27, but some of the newer ones were Washington-Dulles that was announced that starts next week or within two weeks, and we had some others also. Unfortunately, Baltimore was one city that ended up stopping at the end of the year, not because of the service between us and Baltimore. It was Baltimore or Allegiant decided to stop serving Baltimore because some of the extenuous circumstances and conditions that Baltimore put on the airline, so they pulled out. From a passenger perspective, we had 2,174,125 passengers. That was unfortunately down 3.2%. It was still our second year in a row with over a million or over 2 million passengers. A lot of that decline had to do with the hurricane Helene in September. Our seats in the market was 1,410,577. That's up 2.7% being, again, seats in the market. And our load factor for those seats was 77.57%, which was down 5.4%. From an operations perspective, the airlines operated 2,099 flights in 2024, down 9.9%. Again, most of it had to do with Helene. General aviation and military was down 23, or was a total of 2,348. That was down 27.3%, and that was in spite of the rescue and military operations that we had in September because of Helene. Our normal operations during the course of a day is roughly, I want to say roughly 90 flights out at the airport, or 90, you know, I'm sorry, roughly 1,000 flights a day, whether it's general aviation or commercial. During the two weeks after Helene, we had almost 3,000 a day. So that's the kind of operational expect we had. It was huge, huge increase during that time period. From a construction standpoint, we completed the South Shuttle parking lot at approximately $10 million. We're still working on, obviously, the terminal and the FAA control tower. The first half of those will open between the period of this June and this coming July, so stay tuned for that. That project still stays at a total of about $420 million between the two projects. From a community standpoint, we continue to have our Runway 5K. We generated just over $24,000. The three charitable organizations that we contributed from that event was AB Tech Aviation Foundation, Western North Carolina's Pilots Association Foundation, and our partner in from a charity perspective is Big Brothers Big Sisters of Western North Carolina. We did, because after Helene and affecting Halloween, we did an AVL fire truck and treat. We brought our fire trucks out to our cell phone lot across the street, gave out candy that was provided by M&amp;Mars, and just welcomed the public into something a little different. Very successful for the kids and those younger adults that wanted some candy. We continue our Paws for Passengers. That's our dog therapy program that brings volunteer dogs through the terminal, helping them calm nerves before people get on airplanes. From internally from our employees, we have an AVL Gives program, and all of our employees donated over $8,000 to various charities within the community. We also sponsored and worked with Blue Ridge Honor Flight, and we continue to do music in the airport. Economic impact for the last two years, North Carolina's Division of Aviation does a, does an aviation impact statement. The latest brochure came out this past January, talked about it. But Asheville Airport contributes $3.85 billion to our Western North Carolina economy. So huge impact from that perspective. From a financial perspective, operating revenues were just almost just under $29 million. Operating revenues were just almost $15 million, basically netting us $14 million to the good. And at the end of the year, our assets totaled $314,327,687. That's an increase of $40 million from the prior year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Are there questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming and sharing some good news with us.
Great, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thanks, you too. Dr. Mollendorf is on her way up, and she is the chair of the Prevention Team, and she is here to provide more information about our child fatality prevention team. Good to see you. I have some slides. So I'm here tonight as chair of the Buncombe County Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team, and I will be covering the key points of the 2024 Annual Report to the Board. So first, some background. So our local Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team are part of a bigger statewide child fatality prevention system. And per statute, the purpose of this state's child fatality prevention system is to assess the records of deaths of all children who die before the age of 18 and are residents of North Carolina at the time of their death. And with respect to those fatalities, to review the data and prevention strategies related to child abuse, neglect, and death, and utilize a multidisciplinary team to review those deaths in order to do these five things. So one, to develop a community-wide approach to child abuse and neglect. Two, to understand the causes and contributing factors of childhood deaths. Three, identify gaps or deficiencies in service delivery. Four, identify and assist in helping to implement evidence-driven strategies to prevent child death and promote child well-being. And finally, to make and implement recommendations for changes to laws, policies, rules to support children and families and prevent future child abuse, neglect, and death. And in every county in North Carolina, there are these two teams. Most counties have them combined. And as I mentioned in Appendix 1 of the report, there is legislation that was passed in 2023 that's going to change this up a little bit in July so that we have one local team that was part of the consent agenda actually you passed. It's going to be one local Buncombe County Child Fatality Review Team. And another thing I want to point out is there's always a lag. We review deaths the year after they occur. So in 2024, we reviewed 2023 deaths, and I'll go over some of that data on a few slides. But I wanted to point out, what is your role as the Board of County Commissioners? So first, it's to receive this report. Second is to advocate, advocate for any system improvements or needed resources if the team requests them. And third, to appoint members to the team as designated by statute. And team membership is outlined in Appendix 2 of the report. And so now we're going to go into some data. So this shows the number of child fatalities by cause of death for Buncombe County in 2023. The blue bars are the 2023, the number of 2023 deaths. The red line is the five, last five-year average, so you can compare to see what this year's, this past year's data looks like compared to the last five years. So by far, and not out of the ordinary, perinatal conditions such as extreme premature births, placental abruptions lead as the number one cause of child fatalities. The next most common causes of death in 2023 were illnesses and suicide. So this slide looks at that trend in youth suicide in Buncombe County over the last several years. As I shared in my report last year in 2022, there was a significant increase in youth suicide that continued into 2023. And again, although this report is focused on 2023, I wanted to include what we know so far about January through June of 2024. And so as you can see, the trend in youth suicide thankfully appears to be decreasing since that unfortunate peak in 2022. And these suicide deaths over the last seven years have been in children ranging as young as 12 to 17. And the most common method of death has been by hanging, followed by unsecured firearms. And so since 2022, when that increase in youth suicides was first noted, community partners that serve youth and families have stepped up and been implementing programs and services related to youth suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention, and that those services and programs have included community education, training opportunities, and peer support programs. And in response to the 2024 fatality reviews, the team identified ongoing stigma related to mental health as a significant barrier that was preventing youth and families from accessing mental health services, addressing those mental health conditions, and leading to unnecessary injury, illness, and death. And so the team noted the need to address this stigma community-wide and make sure that we were including stakeholders from all populations, including BIPOC and other marginalized populations like LGBTQ plus youth. And so this recommendation was shared with the Buncombe County Children's Collaborative and the Buncombe County Behavioral Health Manager, and via Health System of Care Coordinator, who are working to support youth voice and youth-led projects to decrease stigma and increase awareness of resources and increase protective factors for youth. In 2024, the team also elected to use our, the amount of, the limited funds we received from the state for this, this work, prevention work. We allocated that to help pay for signage promoting the 988 Suiciding Crisis Lifeline, and those materials were displayed, continue to be displayed at Buncombe County parks and other community locations. Going back to the data, when we look at the ages of the deceased children, we see that 60% of the fatalities were in children less than one year of age, and that is consistent with prior years and also what is typically seen across the states and the United States and throughout the world. And when we look further into infant fatalities, so deaths of children before the age of one, this shows the various causes of death. And again, perinatal conditions were the leading cause of death, which again is consistent with prior years and with what is seen for the rest of the state and for the country. Sudden unexplained infant deaths were the second highest cause of death in infants in our county, and those were related to unsafe sleep situations. And so this slide looks at the trend since 2016 and infant deaths associated with unsafe sleep in our county. And again, I added in what we knew so far about 2024, and you can see that every year one to three infants die from sudden unexplained infant death but associated with unsafe sleep. And each year, more than 100 infants in North Carolina die in unsafe sleep environments, and that is the leading cause, is a leading cause of death of infants in North Carolina. And co-sleeping has been the predominant risk factor for these fatalities in recent years, both in Buncombe County and across North Carolina. And so state and local teams that review child deaths continue repeatedly identify the need for prioritizing efforts to educate parents and caregivers and healthcare providers and anyone who interacts with infants about safe sleep. And so we, as a team, we've shared resources with healthcare providers and others who work with families, resources from safesleepnc.org. And last year, we recommended that the county move forward with plans to roll out a public education campaign about safe sleep. That was scheduled to go live in October. So Helene threw us off course, and so we are planning to reengage this month following this presentation with the county's community and public engagement team to roll out a campaign this year. We also recommended that first responders in Buncombe County be trained on infant safe sleep so that when they are called into a house for whatever reason, they can assess and provide education and links to resources for families. And Henderson County is piloting part of a pilot program with Safe Sleep NC, and so we're also hoping to learn from that pilot program. The other recommendation from our team to help with infant mortality was support of paid family leave. Paid family leave is associated with reductions in infant mortality, but it's something that many parents in the United States lack. And it was, the recommendation was for our health director to put this on the, put this forward as an option for the North Carolina Association of Local Health Directors advocacy platform, and also consider for the commissioners to put that on a legislative advocacy agenda. And then moving back to the data, when we look when we look at the deaths by race and ethnicity, we see that 60% of the deaths occurred in white, non-Hispanic children, and 15% occurred in black, non-Hispanic children. But we know that according to the U.S. Census, black individuals make up about 6% of our Buncombe County population. So this shows a disproportionate impact on the black population as well as other communities of color. And this disproportionate impact, when we look at it and the state looks at it more closely around infants, they look at something called the Infant Mortality Disparity Ratio, which compares the death of non-Hispanic white infants, that mortality rate, with the non-Hispanic black infant mortality rate. And what we can see is that for the five-year period, 2019 to 2023, the disparity ratio in Buncombe County was almost three, which means that in Buncombe County, black infants are approximately three times more likely to die before their first birthday than white infants. And this is a little bit higher than it was the previous five-year period, so it's clearly going in the wrong trend. And clearly, any disparity is not good, and any infant death isn't good. And so efforts focused on black infant and black maternal health, focusing on social determinants of health, and of course, racism needs to continue to be addressed. And so this slide summarizes the strategies that are recommended to address infant mortality by the team. So again, infant safe sleep educational campaign, training of first responders on infant safe sleep, advocating for paid family leave, and then continuing to address social determinants of health, and aligning with the North Carolina Perinatal Health Strategic Plan objectives to help improve preconception, health, and maternal health outcomes for our black population. That's my presentation. Are there any questions? Any questions for Dr. Mollendorf?
Well, sorry, by saying thank you for this presentation and that data. It's very sobering and unfortunate and sad. I was curious, I didn't see it in here, and I know you have a ton of data that you could spend all afternoon talking about. Do you have any information about, you said the highest cause of death among a certain age group was hangings and firearms, is that right?
For suicides?
The suicides. How many of those were accidental?
So suicides, if somebody, they're considered suicide if there was a known history of suicidal ideation or if somebody left a note. Otherwise, they'd be called accidental deaths. So everything that was counted as a suicide was considered intentional.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
We don't, we don't, we have a separate category for figuring out.
That would be under accidents.
All of those would be under accidents.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Dr. Mollendorf, thank you. This is always a hard presentation, and we appreciate you and your team's work in this area. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we move on to public comment this evening. Couple of reminders, the time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. When you arrive at the podium, please state your name before you begin speaking. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. The board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board during the same meeting. Please note, a group can select one person to speak for 10 minutes if eight people in attendance relinquish their right to speak on the issue. Right, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Just correct me when you arrive to your microphone. Our first person is Anne Taff? Oh, you like to, okay. All right. Susan Schimer.
It's Susan Schimer, sorry. It's me again, the Chair of the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, advocating on behalf of the providers who receive the Buncombe County Supplemental Aging Funding, which supports older adults 60-plus. While I will continue advocating for the full $500,000 funding, I recognize that budgets of all county services will see a reduction due to Helene recovery cost and revenue shortfalls. My hope is that you will see fit to fund this program, which supports older residents and their caregivers. Just so you're aware, the fiscal year's delay in funding level determinations put a strain on cash flow for some of these programs. Typically, by April 30th, Advisory Committee has submitted their final recommendations. Presently, we have not been able to release the applications for the supplemental aging funding. So briefly, the grant applications are released in January, they come back in March. This gives the committee members a chance to read, review, discuss, and determine final recommendations at our April meeting. May and June commissioners approve the budget and contracts are prepared for July 1st distribution. Once all funding levels have been determined, I request that we work together to expedite the decision-making and contracting processes so that grant funds can be available as soon as possible after the July 1st, beginning of the fiscal year. Looking to the future, as the older population in Buncombe County continues to increase, I would like to see the $500,000 funding restored and perhaps increased. North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services projects that in 2042, 30% of our county residents will be 60-plus, almost a third. Most of us want our age in our home. Day Stay Respite, Blue Ridge Pride, Working Wheels Car Repair, On Track Financial Counseling, Unitake Senior Center, Mahak Home-Based Community Care, Memory Care, Caregiver Support, and Buncombe County In-Home Aid Program supports that goal. Buncombe County Supplemental Aging Funds support them. Thank you for your time.
Matt Barker.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Matt Barker. I'm a Swanonoa resident and on the Board of Friends and Neighbors of Swanonoa. I'm mainly here to say thank you. I thank you for showing up in Swanonoa and for Swanonoa as we work hard to recover from Helene's impacts. It means a lot to see our Commissioners in person at many of our community meetings. I've seen Commissioner Wells, Commissioner Whitesides, Commissioner Ball, Commissioner Horton, in addition to several members of county staff in our community in recent weeks. Others may have attended meetings I wasn't at. But if you haven't yet come to experience the energy of our community in these days, I invite you to do so. We've done a lot of work on debris cleanup. I drove our community's roads today. We've come a long way with many thanks due to county workers and contractors who have come alongside the thousands of Swanonoa residents and volunteers who have really stepped up to begin restoring the natural beauty of our valley. As we gradually move into the long-term recovery phase, we're finding renewed hope in the return of normal community rhythms. Homes are being rebuilt, restaurants and other businesses are reopening. But there is one significant exception that is obvious to anyone passing through the heart of our town. So in addition to thanking you today for keeping Swanonoa among your top priorities as we recover from Helene, I am here to ask you to continue doing whatever is within your power to encourage Ingalls Corporation to reopen their Swanonoa supermarket and to join us in creating a brighter and even more resilient future for Swanonoa. I'm hoping soon Ingalls will announce their reopening plan so we can all mark our calendars for a grand reopening celebration. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Roy Harris.
Commissioners, my name is Roy Harris, and I just a couple of months ago completed 42 years in Buncombe County. As I start to take my leave of absence from Buncombe County in Asheville, I just want to say thank you. I went to my hometown this past weekend. I won't call the county's name, but part of it is, it's still a poor county. And it has its issues being a poor county. And so just wanted to say thank you again for the services that you provided me. In fact, I went past probably 20 to 30 doctor's office, those kinds of things, just walking over here. In my county, home county, there's one health department. But thank you very much for everything, and I'd like to leave you with these words. When I went home to my hometown, one of the places I went to is I used to live with my maternal grandparents and whatever. And they had a pig out back. And when I was in high school, my job was to feed the pig before I went to school. And I would go out on the back porch on a good day, we had corn. On a not-so-good day, we had vegetables that was unusable. But on a real bad month or whatever, we had what they call slop. I learned a lesson feeding those pigs. Because I would go out and holler, "Sui, sui." They knew I was coming. And if I put all the corn in the trough, all of the strong pigs would get there first in Jossifal position and knock each other out of the way and all that kind of stuff. I had to learn the hard way to save some for the poor. Save some for the ones that were overweight, to save some for the ones that were little, so that everybody got to participate in the feeding. Buncombe County, you will come into that in your life here. As Hurricane Helene money comes down the pike, make sure that you remember the little pigs, the fat pigs, and all of them, because if you're not careful, the money will be spent among the strong. So I'll be back to check on you. And maybe, you know, I wanted to stay in this community, but I can't afford to. I can't afford to have a residence here and a resident in my hometown. And so I'm working it out. Again, thank you for your service, and thank you for this because one of the first persons I met here was the Honorable Jane Marini, who helped me get my first house. And so you've been a big part of it, so thank you again.
Thank you, Roy. We wish you all the best. And normally, we do not allow any applause or boos, but we will, we will give Mr. Harris his due this evening after his 42 years. We wish you well. Rachel Murdaugh, and again, if I mispronounce it, just correct me when you get up here.
Hi, thank you for your time this evening. My name's Rachel Murdaugh. I'm here representing the I-26 Citizens Coalition and the AIA, and AIA Western North Carolina. Since this past February, we have been working to raise awareness of late-stage changes made to the design of the I-26 Connector Project. And so I'm here to update you on what we've been doing and what we plan to do. So just as a summary, changes were made late-stage and without reevaluation of the EIS, the Environmental Impact Statement, and without community input or review by an interdisciplinary team, when the impacts of these changes should have merited such measures. The most drastic changes include the redesign to Route I-26 above Patton Avenue, the inclusion of future lanes inconsistent with trip count projections, and the lane count and width on Patton Avenue. The overpass design in particular has a greater negative impact on the noise pollution, in terms of aesthetics, noise, and pollution compared to the community-approved design, which was documented in the 2020 Environmental Impact Statement. Studies show that noise from elevated roadways far exceeds the noise from trinched roadways, and increased health risks associated with living in proximity to elevated roadways is also documented. The overpass and design of Patton Avenue would make it all but impossible to realize the thriving urban vision encapsulated in the community-approved plan. Gawn will be the multimodal boulevard connecting downtown to West Asheville, because no one wants to walk or bike along a high-speed highway and beneath a bridge wider than a football field. Additionally, the elevated roadway would plummet adjacent property values, stunting development on the west side of the river for decades, which translates into a massive loss in tax revenue. So on April 24th, many members of our community groups and organizations attended NC DOT's Public Information Session. As a whole, we found their information and explanations inconsistent, incomplete, and evasive. I personally heard Traffic Engineers state that the economic and aesthetic impact on our city does not matter to their agency. And as an architect who understands the need to consider the contextual demands of a project, I find this outlook unacceptable, and I furthermore find it to be at odds with what I have read in NEPA procedural requirements. Going forward, our groups are organizing a community design charrette to give the public a chance to view the changes and provide feedback in a manner that we will be able to deliver back to NC DOT, who has indicated that they are, to some degree, willing to receive that feedback and incorporate it in some manner. Our goal is to arrive at a design that is equal to or better than the least environmentally impactful, the design with the least environmental impact. And to make sure that this project, in the end, serves everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Wilson. And Sonia Marcus will follow Cindy. Just, we'll start having everyone be prepared for time.
Thank you for your interest. I'm here representing the Beach Changes Center Board as, as your president. We waited two and a half years to get a license agreement from the county. We got the agreement, and we had a community meeting for questions. Our lawyer worked with County Legal, and it was going for process review for us to come back and execute the license agreement. In very, very late stages, we found out that the Commissioners, somebody changed the whole process to an RFQ process. So I'm here on behalf, we've got a team next door too that can come in. But we're here in the community, there's a lot of members that are upset, and we're trying to understand why this process changed at such a late stage in the process. My second comment is, I learned this weekend from a former president and a community member that back in 89 timeframe, there was a commissioner who wanted to buy the property from Buncombe County, and community members came, landowners came to a Commissioners' meeting. I know Bill Stanley, they mentioned he was on the board then. And it was stated then that the residents said, hey, you cannot sell what you do not own. So there's some speculation now, so we really want clarity and transparency on the chain of ownership, because we're getting different stories from the community member's family that they gave land, and then community members paid for part of the land, a lady donated the other part of the land. And so we're just wanting to know who we can meet with to get a clear chain on transparency of the ownership who actually owns the land. And then we really want to know why this process changed, the land was changed for an RFQ. And then I have a suggestion as well, because several of us have emailed you, the Commissioners, and there's not any kind of communication. We've not received communication from the Commissioners. I personally have not. I've left, I've sent emails, community members have sent emails. But there's no, like, return email that says, hey, you know, thank you for your response. We'll be in touch at a certain time period. So it might be helpful if there was some kind of response when we, when, not just us, when anybody emails the Commissioners, that we know that our email has actually gone through to someone, and we can wait for that. So thank you for your time.
Sonia Marcus and Ellen Girardi will follow.
Hi, it's good to be with you. Thank you so much for your service to our community, which is deeply appreciated, particularly in regards to recovery efforts. I myself was involved with kind of frontline disaster recovery work right after the hurricane. We stood up a mutual aid center in West Asheville called Southern Dharma Oasis. We were providing clean water to the community until potable water was restored in people's homes. And it's just, it's very encouraging to know that our community's leaders are behind us and continuing to support our needs. I'm here today to talk to you as a homeowner who lives in east-west Asheville on Westwood Place near Hazel Mill Road. The recent changes that have been made to the I-26 Connector Project, including the Patton Avenue overpass and the widening of 240 through downtown, these changes in the way that they have been brought forward fundamentally undermine the integrity of DOT's entire public input process over the last 25 years and will deprive this community of hard-won amenities that we deserve and saddle some of us with problems that we do not deserve. Terms of neighborhood impacts, compared to an underpass, a highway overpass propagates noise over a much larger area due to its elevated position. Residents of Burton Street, Emma, and east-west Asheville will bear the brunt of this. Keep in mind that noise mitigation efforts for overpasses are less effective and higher cost. And in regards to air pollution, it's interesting that we're celebrating Air Quality Awareness Week. Here's one more measure to consider. How about we put I-26 back in a trench under Patton Avenue? Underpasses concentrate pollutants in a depressed area while overpass- Underpasses concentrate pollutants in a depressed area while overpasses disperse them in the neighborhood. I use an inhaler every morning as a person who has been suffering from chronic asthma since I was a child. Let me tell you about some of the documented health impacts from increased highway pollutants in the short and longer term, having to do with asthma exacerbations, reduced lung growth in children, weakened immune defenses, hypertension, heart attacks, and other cardiovascular diseases, higher stroke incidents, preterm birth, and low birth weight in infants. So we would like to know why we are not being given the opportunity to have public input on the last changes that were made to this project. As my co-organizer Rachel mentioned, we have a community design charrette coming up, and we would very much appreciate the presence of our commissioners there, including those who serve on the French Broad MPO. We are trying very hard to adopt a constructive relationship with DOT.
Thank you, Sonia. Ellen Girardi and Meg Turner will follow.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Girardi. I'm a lower school principal and I serve as the Safety Director at IC Imagine. IC Imagine is a K-12 charter school in West Asheville and the third largest school in Buncombe County. We serve 1,250 students and employ 150 people. 1,400 people, the majority of which are children and young adults, spend their days at Imagine. I've been at this school since we opened in 2014, and we started in a shopping center off of Brevard Road. In the fall of 2019, we moved into our 115,000-square-foot permanent campus off of McIntosh Road, and we sit on 47 acres. As a public charter, our needs are no different than traditional public schools. Creating a safe, supportive, welcoming school environment is our number-one focus. Without that, we cannot focus on the business of school. Soon after we opened, it became clear that the charter schools in Buncombe County are often forgotten or were an afterthought. We realized quickly that we were at a disadvantage due to not having an SRO assigned to us. We started to have conversations with Sheriff Miller about this need early in our school's existence. We've had conversations with commissioners over the years, most recently with Commissioner Moore in January. Each conversation ends with us being told we have support, but no forward momentum is ever achieved. This feels like another way the safety of our school, our students, and our staff are being overlooked. In April, we hired an outside agency to do an MDA safety assessment of our school, and having a designated SRO was one of their top recommendations. Last week, we met with Robert Holland, a former longtime sheriff of Macon County, our regional safety, school safety specialist from the NC Center for Safer Schools, and he expressed his shock that we don't have our own SRO. We appreciate the support we've received from the Sheriff's Department over the years. The SROs we have worked with always come when we call, even though there can be a significant wait time. They're responsive to our needs as they're able. But with our size, it's impossible for us to ignore that our community is being underserved without having a designated SRO on our campus each day. We know the position needs to be allocated and that needs to be in the budget. We're asking you to help us make sure that happens or ask the sheriff to reallocate existing resources. Please support us in ensuring that there's a designated SRO for IC Imagine in the 25, 26 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. And Jen Townley will, Jen Townley will follow Meg Turner. Good evening, Meg.
Good evening. I'm Meg Turner. I live, have lived in Asheville for 30 years, and I've worked for Buncombe County Schools for 21 of those 30 years. I was an assistant principal for four years, and my final 17 with Buncombe County were as a high school principal. I currently serve as the upper school principal at IC Imagine Public Charter School. Before giving the reason and addressing why I'm here tonight, I just want to thank the commissioners for your unwavering support of public education. It's been clear through my career in Buncombe County where you all stand on public education. Even in the leanest of years, you and the commissioners who have come before you have always made public education a priority, and I thank you for that. Tonight, I come to you with a problem and a plea. We ask that you support our request of Sheriff Miller to add or allocate a position funded, dedicated for a school resource officer at our school. When I was hired as a principal at Imagine in 2023, that would be 2023, I was shocked to find out that we did not have an SRO. In my time with Buncombe County Schools, going all the way back to 2001, I always had a full-time SRO assigned to the school where I worked. I became accustomed to, but never took for granted, the partnership of an officer who could help ensure a safe environment by building trusting relationships every day at work with children and adults alike. Those relationships were the foundation of preventing undesirable, scary, and at times, illegal behaviors. There were a number of times I had to call an SRO to assist with a situation that was going to turn violent or perhaps had already become violent. The officer's daily presence made a huge difference in his ability or her ability to respond. In my experience, it's just not the same to have an officer on call to address the issues that arose. In our case at IC Imagine, that officer could be 10 or 20 or 30 minutes away. Not only is the response time potentially deadly, there is no basis for relationship building or focus on prevention. Quite frankly, bringing a stranger to work alongside an administrator or a teacher or a student or a family just doesn't cut it. In my 40 years in public education across four states, things have changed quite a bit. Safe school plans used to be monthly fire drills. Now they're over 20 pages long and range with potential dangers from natural disasters to active shooters. The complexity of school safety and the vulnerability that we face deserve the same resources that other public schools have in Buncombe County. Why in the world are we not being treated the same as other middle schools and high schools in Buncombe County who all have a dedicated SRO and we have an added elementary school to boot? There just isn't an explanation that justifies continuing that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Eleanor S. will follow Jen Townley.
Jen Townley, good evening. I am a proud Buncombe County resident since 1976. I was born right down the road back then. So I've been here forever. I do appreciate your service and all that you do. And I'm here also to talk with you about IC Imagine Public Charter School. I'm the Executive Director of the school and have been since 2014. Public charter schools in North Carolina are governed by the North Carolina State Board of Education. We're funded by state, federal, and local funds. And our school provides a free public education to students. We're held to the same standards and laws as all public schools. Just like Buncombe County Schools, we work with the North Carolina Center for Safer Schools, and we must meet all legislation regarding safety in schools. We have applied for and received the SR grant that covers one-third of the salary and benefit for an SR for years. I've been reaching out to the Sheriff's Department regarding an SRO since 2015. With other charter leaders, we requested time with all Buncombe County Commissioners in 2019, but only one commissioner responded. In 2019, I again met with the sheriff to request an SRO at IC Imagine. We reignited this effort this fall, and Sheriff Miller reasserted his support for us having our own SRO. In January, Commissioner Moore visited us and also assured us of his support and shared that the sheriff just needed to add the position to his budget. When we spoke with the sheriff after that meeting, he said the commissioners needed to allocate the position. We understand that the Sheriff's Department is under a hiring freeze at this time. If adding a new position to the sheriff's budget is not a possibility, we respectfully request that one of the current SRO positions be reassigned to our school. We're grateful for all of the efforts the Sheriff's Department and current SROs have given to our school. They provided support when needed, which is often, just like all schools in this county. However, reactive support is not at all the same as providing a consistent resource to allow for proactive relationships and planning. The question I have for all of us is what, who do we hold responsible if something catastrophic happens and we have not adequately resourced, adequately resourced all public schools in Buncombe County? I've gone on record several times and I'm here again to state that IC Imagine needs an SRO. Are you willing to take responsibility for the decision not to prioritize all students in Buncombe County? Will the Sheriff's Office be held responsible? I'm really confident that I'm going to get held accountable if something happens. I just want us to all think about what our response is going to be to the community if the unimaginable happens. Again, thank you for your service and time, understanding how difficult jobs, our children are everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Eleanor S. and Ashnee Rhodes, I hope I got that right, will follow Eleanor.
Hello, my name is Eleanor, and we are coming to you from Asheville High as officers and volunteers of student government. We are here to voice student concern and let you know that we as students are aware and worried about the projected school budget shortfall for next year and the loss of staff members that comes with it. We want to advocate for the teachers we love that make our school feel like a home. We are here to share stories of our places of belonging on campus. I'm a junior, and when I was coming in as a freshman, I was nervous about what was to come in high school. But immediately when I met my cross-country coach the summer before freshman year, I knew I found a place where I belonged. During the past three years, he has fostered a community that has made the team and practices the highlight of each of my school days. He has always made it known that he believes in me and is constantly pushing me to do the best, to be the best leader I can be. I've made so many friends and have been able to grow my self-confidence on and off the course more than I could have ever imagined. The team would not be half of what it is without him. Teachers like him, who push me every day to be my best self, have greatly improved my high school experience. Our teachers and staffs, our teacher and staff believe in us even when we don't and shape us to become leaders who positively impact and make change in the community. Funding the budget to keep each of our staff members is a vital investment in our community. Thank you all, thank you for all that you do and for your time.
Thanks, Eleanor. Ashnee Rhodes and Maya M. will follow her.
Hi, my name is Ashnee, and I'm a junior at Asheville High, and I'm also a proud member of our student government. Last semester, I had Mr. Khan as my math three teacher, and we had many memories as a class. But one experience in particular stood out to me. Over winter break, I had a life-changing trip to Rajasthan, India with my family. We had the opportunity to meet relatives and explore the town where my grandfather grew up. While I hadn't spoken much about the trip, to my surprise, Mr. Khan knew about it. On the first day back from break, he pulled me aside, and I was nervous at first because I thought I was in trouble. But instead, he began to ask me countless questions about my journey. His face lit up as we talked, as he talked about his home country, and it was heartwarming to connect with him on such a personal level. This conversation meant more to me than I can express because in my high school experience, I've had very few teachers of color, let alone an Indian teacher. Mr. Khan and I bonded immediately because of our shared heritage, and that sense of connection was truly powerful. It's clear to me that diversity in our teaching staff isn't just about representation. It fosters meaningful relationships that impact students in ways that go beyond academics. Teachers like Mr. Khan help students feel seen and understood, and their presence is crucial in creating a more inclusive and supportive school environment. Given that teachers of color are disproportionately affected by layoffs, it's vital to ensure that funding supports their continued presence in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Maya M. will be followed by Cam M.
Hello, my name is Maya McDermott from Asheville High School Student Government. When I first came to Asheville High, I had trouble fitting in. I felt completely out of place and lost, until I walked into my strings class where I was amazed by the people who knew their instruments, and I was scared to play along, until I worked up the courage to talk to my teacher, Mr. Keel, who works as the high school and middle school strings teacher. He helped me improve on my cello. He made me feel confident in myself and inspires me every day to be the best person I can, both in strings and out of strings. All I'm hoping for is that we keep strings alive in Asheville City Schools because it's meaningful and inspiring to me and so many others. And I want it to impact so many more people after I'm gone from Asheville High. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Maya. Tim Lloyd will follow Cam. Please step as close to the microphone as you can so we can hear you all. Thank you.
A significant point that has defined my high school career as of right now and the future onward is getting out of my comfort zone when it comes to talking to others and trying something new. And someone who is a big part of that was my 10th-grade civics teacher. She got me into student government and pushed my boundaries to getting, for, and getting me into a new area school I would never knew I'd love. Between talking to people and making plans for the school, including school events that students and teachers enjoy to this day, without my 10th-grade civics teacher, I wouldn't have gotten to where I am today with being in touch with my high school and meeting so many nice people. You've heard how our teachers believe in us even when we don't ourselves and inspire us to change the world for the better. Funding the budget to keep all of our teachers and staff in an investment in our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Cam. Christina, Christine Shimrock will follow Tim. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Lloyd, custodian at Asheville Middle School and President of Asheville City Association of Educators. I'm here tonight to present the petition from Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County School staff that calls for the maintaining of all staff and services and programs for our students in this challenging time of recovery. We have given these signatures to the clerk as well. For the first time in history, a majority of all public school staff in this county from both school districts, from all 60 work sites, signed onto this petition because this is a matter of our students' futures. ACAe and BCAe stand with both Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools' school boards in full support of their budget requests because we know our kids cannot do with any less than our schools. I want to share a quick story from my time at Asheville Middle School. At my school, there were only three full-time custodians in the building at all times. Three people for a massive building used by 800 or so students and 100 staff members. Every day, we make do and we do our best. One day, one of those full-time custodians was in the hospital, leaving it up to just me and another coworker to cover three halls by ourselves, meaning that some classrooms just weren't cleaned or they had to be cleaned during the next day, we had to make do. And that same day, a classroom sink also started gushing water from the pipes all over the carpet. And even though I am not a plumber, I was the only one with tools suitable enough to fix it. I stopped the leak. I made do. And I shared this story because this story is not normal. But if funding cuts come, this story will be normalized. Dirty classrooms will be normalized. Custodians being pulled in multiple directions will be normalized. A worse learning environment will be normalized, and the commissioners in this room tonight can stop that. Commissioners, we are not asking for the moon here. We're not asking for the stars. We are not asking for more programs or services or pay. We are asking that August 2025 be like August 2024. That is why you must honor and fund the full budget asks of Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools. I understand that this decision may be difficult, but like a teacher friend of mine tells her students every day, "You can do hard things." And if you do not make the difficult decision correctly, if you choose not to fully fund the school budgets, it will be up to the student or family to make other more difficult decisions. We cannot take anything more from our students, our future, our possible future county commissioners even, to make those difficult decisions. You must stand with them and make it for them. So fully fund the Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools' budget requests and fully fund the future. Thank you.
Christina Mason will follow Christine Shimrock.
Double Christinas. Okay. Hi, my name is Christina Shimrock. I'm a parent Penelope Shimrock, a 3rd grader at Claxton Elementary, and my son Luca will be a kindergarten there in two years. I'm a former public school educator, the Chair of the Claxton Social Justice League, and I'm also a part of the Families of Asheville City Schools FACS. We are a group of parents, caregivers, and community members that represent each of our schools and our district. I also am here tonight to present the community petition also signed between ACAe and BCAe with those same asks. At FACS, our mission is to celebrate and defend our public schools for all, to celebrate the joy happening inside classrooms, the growth, the learning. As a newly established group, we advocate for the student, staff, and resources that provide learning and working conditions within our schools that are safe, loving, joyful, and effective. One of our guiding questions has been centered around values. Do your values align with your educational choices? The questions I ask you tonight, commissioners, do your values around public schools align with how you vote for education funding here in Buncombe? Our first focus is how we fund our public schools. Have you seen all around town with our two cents yard signs? We are advocating on behalf of our community, of our commissioners, to reinstate the city's supplemental tax from 10.6 cents to 12 cents per $100 of assessed property value. We know that this restoration can restore at least $1.5 million of funding for ACS. But this is only a portion of the deficit. The deficit is not a result of mismanagement, but rather a result of the increasing needs of our students while state's funding has been flat. The narrative of mismanagement and passing the buck is old and tired. The deficit is a confluence of issues from the federal and state level, rising cost of living, and loss of local revenue. Cutting funding means cutting access for our children and further widening the achievement gap. The achievement gap reveals the opportunity gap, opportunities for healthy relationships with safe and trusted adults. Opportunities for healthy relationships with safe and trusted adults, emotional regulation strategies, and restorative opportunities when harm is committed. Helene reminded us what community can look like. Reminded us that we take care of each other. We live in a time where threats to dismantle public education are no longer threats. The quiet parts are said out loud, that public schools are not for the common good anymore. We see this on the federal and state levels through budget proposals that would funnel billions into private school vouchers. We say not here, not in Buncombe County. We believe public schools are a public good and that when you, our elected officials, value and prioritize investing in our children, you invest in our community. Do you believe this? Will your vote on how to fund education here in Buncombe County reflect this? I am here with a powerful coalition of teachers, staff, parents, and community members from BCS and ACS to use our collective voice to proudly say, "Fund our schools fully" with these specific petition asks. Thank you.
Thanks Christina. Christina Mason followed by Franklin Keel.
I'm Christina Mason, and I'm also a member of the Families of Asheville City Schools. But you don't have to be named Christina to join us. I'm a resident of Asheville City School District and a supporter of our school staff unions, and I'm also a member of Public Schools Strong, which advocates for fully funded school budgets. Before I became a parent, I had no idea that I'd be getting involved with all of these school advocacy groups. But now I have a 2nd grader in Asheville City Schools who's an EC student, and I'm seeing our schools being short-changed and witnessing the ripple effects in the classroom and in the schools because I think the commission fears public blowback for a tax hike. But there are also costs to not acting, to underreacting, and to undertaxing. Fully funding schools, like Christina said, is an investment, one that the commission hasn't necessarily made consistently. Tonight, I'm urging you to be leaders and to make hard choices to right some past wrongs. Over the years, the commission has been kind of obsessed with keeping tax revenues neutral. People liked not paying more, so I get it. But our students and staff paid the price. People don't stick around underfunded schools. As I see it, you have two levers to fix this. The general county property tax and the supplemental Asheville City Schools tax. Using both together, I think that you can fully fund the school budgets. You're worried about raising taxes, after Helene, and I get it. But consider, tax rates, property tax rates have actually dropped. The commission has steadily cut the supplemental tax rate. Today, it's less than half of what it was in 1981, 25 cents. By 1997, the rate had dropped to 21 cents, 20 cents in 2006, 15 cents in 2015, 12 cents in 2018, and it's been holding steady at 10.6 cents since 2022. Since the early 2000s, the commission's also cut property tax rates. In 2002, the countywide rate was more than 62 cents, but it was lowered to 52 cents in 2010 and 49.8 cents in 2024. Meanwhile, wealth in Asheville has significantly increased. The U.S. Census Bureau estimated in 2023 that median household income went up 36% in five years, and they said the median was something like $90,000. We had a big influx of retirees, wealthy teleworkers, and COVID and climate refugees. So the Asheville of today is not the same Asheville it was five or 10 years ago. Unemployment was only 2.8% until Helene, and it's bouncing back. You already put off property reevaluations to give taxpayers a break after the hurricane, and there's at least one more budget cycle, which means you're not going to factor in these new numbers for probably at least one or two more budgets. We can raise taxes now and reassess in one to two years when we've got those new numbers, but what we can't afford to do is just wait and see because our schools are not going to make it. Also, I wanted to remind you that tourism dollars are coming back. The TDA forecasts that a rebound this fall driven by travel demand and potential increase in domestic travel and visitor spending is expected to recover.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. If you have additional comments, you can leave them with our clerk. Franklin Keel and Dori Daris is next.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair and esteemed commissioners. My name is Franklin Keel, and my position at Asheville High School is slated to be eliminated. I've been an off-and-on resident of Buncombe County since 1991, and I'm currently employed by Asheville City Schools as the String Orchestra Director. For much of this time, I've been part of the Asheville art scene as a cellist, singer-songwriter, and conductor. From performances in the Asheville Youth Orchestra and the Honor String Quartet as a high school student to 25 seasons with the Asheville Symphony Orchestra and 20 years with the Opal String Quartet. I'm tooting my own horn a little bit, but that is because the seeds of my music career were planted in Buncombe County Schools. It was in the strings program at AC Reynolds High School that I discovered and cultivated my love of music and the cello. And that was so impactful to me that I chose to become a teacher with the goal of maintaining that environment where the next generation can discover and cultivate their own love of music. I've taught music at all levels, elementary through college, in three different counties, all while watching the gradual withering of our state's education system. Riding on the political backlash from the Affordable Care Act in 2010, the Republican legislators cemented their now longstanding majority through redistricting and has insulated themselves from public accountability as they began stripping the public school system for parts. There is now a steady flow from our public school dollars to private and charter schools, and we are left having to make some really tough decisions. For all the benefits private and charter schools offer to their students, one thing they sorely lack is access. For those students who depend on the bus system to get to school or the school cafeteria for a hot meal, private and charter schools are not an option. North Carolina Republicans are pulling up the ladder that the American dream is supposed to offer to anyone regardless of how much money they make. But here today, we are called to meet this bleak reality with resolute defiance. We defy the negligence and the abuse of the General Assembly by providing for our people a free, robust education where students can explore whatever they are passionate about. And we show our state what a free public education means to our community and our society at large because the cuts will keep coming from the state and the federal government. And we're going to be left to our own devices as they want us to be. We must protect and provide for those who cannot protect and provide for themselves, and that starts with our children. Our public schools are better at this than private schools, and we have the history, the experience, the dedication, the diversity. We have the ability to lift up those who don't believe in their own potential. We call on you not to passively accept North Carolina Republicans' plan for public schools. If you do, you will be complicit in the degradation of our public services. The attrition of students will continue, more staff will lose their livelihoods, and more children will never realize their potential, their passions, or their future. Thank you.
Thank you Franklin. Dori Daris and Jerry Nugent will follow.
Hello, my name is Dori Daris. I'm here representing the I-26 Citizens Coalition to voice concern of the current design of the I-26 connector. I'll start with sharing some current stats of where we are and what we've accomplished in the last few short months. So our petition has more than 1,800 signatures, and about a third of the people leave comments pleading, begging, asking, you know, "We don't want this freeway within our community." It will dominate our public space where West Asheville, downtown, and River Arts all converge. Our signature count is growing daily. I'll provide updated statistics next month after our design shret. So NC DOT's decision to accept Archer Wright's bid with the Patton Avenue overpass disregards the years of effort of public input and the reasoning as to why has been somewhat elusive or inconsistent. So prior claims from DOT mention astronomical cost to relocate underground fiber. And more recently, at the DOT Public Info Meeting, I was told it was driven by construction phasing and the reduction of temporary intersections. Which is fair, I understand all projects have their trade-offs. So a quick note on my qualifications. I've worked in capital projects for 10 years and am a certified project management professional and have a master's in engineering management. So to incorporate late-stage changes and not share the updated design with the community or city and county officials and claim there's no change in community impacts without any studies is unheard of. Now DOT claims the project is too far along to make major changes, but I firmly reject this notion. Now is the time to influence change before shovels hit the ground. There's a cognitive bias called the sunken cost fallacy where you're kind of reluctant to abandon a course of action based on how much effort you've put into date. Mind you, DOT was willingly to abandon the community-led design alternative 4B for some short-term construction trade-offs. So our community design shret will be held prior to the end of DOT's public comment period, and will gather valuable public feedback. We urge you to use whatever powers you have to ensure that DOT not just considers it, but incorporates this feedback in good faith. I will note the project budget is now up on their website from $1.2 billion to $1.8 billion. So there might be more money available in the state transportation improvement plan. Let's use our taxpayer funds wisely. Thank you.
Thanks, Dori. Lena Stapleton will follow Jerry Nugent.
Hi, I am a fairly new resident of Asheville, Buncombe County. And I want to start by saying thank you to Commissioner Horton and Commissioner Moore because you voted to stop the clawing back of the funds. And that's huge, and that's really important. I belong to a couple of groups here. Public Schools Strong and also Good Trouble, Western North Carolina. And we recently, if you read it and saw it on the news, we had 7,500 people gather, people who are very upset about things that are going on locally, statewide, and federal in our federal government. And I don't think it's about their taxes being raised. It's about rights being taken away. It's about their kids losing access to education, their special needs kids who will not have the services that they currently have. People are scared, they're angry, they're sad. And I do believe that this group will have to show a lot of courage because we need change and we need taxes to be increased. It's essential. And you're problem solvers. There really, to my knowledge, isn't another route to go. But there is that route. There is a way, there is a solution. I was an elementary school counselor in Tampa, Florida. I saw what these people are talking about. I was with kids who were dangerous. I was with kids who were suicidal. Teachers are my heroes. I love teachers, and that's why when I came here, I immediately started getting involved because those are our kids, that's our future. And we cannot let that be destroyed. It's being destroyed, and I think you all know that. I think everybody here knows that. We can't let that happen. There are solutions, you have to look for solutions. And I want you to, you know, really reflect on that and dig down deep and get the courage because I think these two had courage before, Commissioner Horton and Commissioner Moore. I think that they were courageous.
Please no clapping or snapping, excuse me. No clapping, no snapping, please. Thank you.
Thanks for the applause, though, guys. But it's going to take that. I came here, I didn't know I was going to talk, but I have to. You know, this is such an important issue. And one of the things that Christine asked me to mention is there's a lot of corporations that are making a lot of money right now, and they could afford to pay more taxes. People will pay them. People want their kids well-educated, and it's essential. So please find the courage and solve this problem because you can do it. There's solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Lena Stapleton and then Samantha Galman.
Good evening, my name is Lena Stapleton. I'm a parent of two students at Oakley Elementary School in the Reynolds District and a friend to students and their parents all over Buncombe County Schools. I'm also a former Buncombe County Schools employee of nearly 15 years, and I've lived in Asheville for my entire adult life since 2001, when I moved here to attend UNCA where I was a North Carolina Teaching Fellow. I've walked the halls of nearly every public school in this county over the course of those 25 years. As a parent, I now serve on the Oakley Elementary School Improvement Team and the Parent Advisory Council, and I am literally missing a PTO meeting to be here. I also have a standing weekly volunteer session at the school. Because of my background and being a very involved parent, I think I have a pretty good understanding of the needs of schools in Buncombe and the effect that well-funded schools have on both our children and their localized communities within our county. But well-funded schools is not what we have here, and in the case of this particular budget, it's not even what we're asking for. We're asking for no cuts so that our children can go to school next year in a building that looks and feels like this year's after a year that saw, for children in grades four and up, yet another major disruption. We have no idea what the long-term effects both COVID and Hurricane Helene interruptions will have on our community's economic health when these children start graduating and becoming active members. But we do know that well-funded schools produce graduates who contribute positively to the local economy and help bridge gaps in education and provide services like counseling and extracurriculars that are crucial to the holistic development of our children. I suspect that you already know those things. I really struggled to decide what I wanted to say with only my parent hat on to show you what I'm seeing now through that lens. I could talk about my child who's diagnosed with anxiety, who benefits from smaller class sizes. I could tell you that I donated the money to buy the books for the Battle of the Books team to read this year. That came from me. I could tell you that the PTO provides money to every new teacher automatically so that they don't have to spend as much of their own money on their classroom supplies. I'm pretty sure that I would actually spend less of my own money at Oakley if my property taxes went to education appropriately. Again, I suspect you already know those types of things are happening across our schools. So if you already know these things, I can only ask what you plan to do with that knowledge. We are begging you not to cut budgeting to our schools. If we don't get a budget that maintains for inflation, we will never recover. You will never find a way to make that money back up again. My children deserve that funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Samantha Galman and then Joan Hoffman.
Hello, like many others here tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of our public schools. I'm from Buncombe County Schools, I work at Owen High School. Often, I try to speak for people who can't attend meetings. They may be at other jobs, other responsibilities. I wish to do so tonight with a poem. All right. I am not a line item. I am the person that assists your child onto a bus. What will you do if I'm not available? I am not a budget request. I am one of three coworkers that prepare food for about 800 people in two different schools every day. What will you do if one of us is absent permanently? I am not a superfluous expenditure. I help teachers integrate technology, learning platforms in their school. Since these are always changing, it doesn't matter if these are new teachers or old teachers. I keep everyone in the loop and capable, unless I'm not around to help. I am not a temporary hire from an outside company who could care less if the places your child touches are sanitized. I too am a parent, a community member, caring about the health and well-being of the children I see each day in the hallways I sweep. I am not a bean counter. I inventory all the school's assets so that we are compliant with laws ensuring that we take care of public funds. I am not an outdated mode of learning. I make available reading materials, both digital and print, based on curriculum and student interest and needs. I am not just an extra payroll number. I am the person who assists the kid having a breakdown in the middle of class so the teacher can continue teaching those who are holding it together. I am not a dollar amount. I coordinate transportation across difficult terrain in ever-changing weather circumstances. I am not an expenditure. I am the person that cares to make sure that people are paid on time correctly. I am not a dispensable person. I fix broken equipment, furniture, printers, computers, ceilings, knowing that if I can't fix it, you don't have money to replace it. I am not a dispensable person, an expenditure, a dollar amount, an extra payroll number, an outdated mode of learning, a bean counter, a temp, or a line item. I am a person who chose to be part of a noble profession, and I will not be slashed in silence. Before you pass a budget that reduce fundings for schools, I hope you investigate which roles in our schools will be cut. What is the specific value to the children in our classrooms? Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Joan Hoffman and then Shanna Pill and Priscilla Nutt.
Good evening, I'm Joan Hoffman. I'm a technology educator at AC Reynolds High School, and I'm here to talk to you about my two children at Glen Arden Elementary. I come to you today with gratitude in my heart about the incredible community we have at Buncombe County Schools. My family survived Hurricane Helene, but my home sustained more than $50,000 in damages with no help from my insurance and very little help from FEMA. It was my school community that continues to show up for me and my family from Owen- school community that continues to show up for me and my family. From Owen High School all the way to Lester, staff members have come to my aid in so many ways. I am here feeling more hopeful every day that one day my home will be repaired. It was the teachers and the principals who were calling families and checking on our students. It was our school buses that were being used to distribute disaster aid. Last Thursday, 2,400 cubic feet of debris was removed from my front yard. I can't describe the feeling of raking up tiny pieces of drywall and thinking about planting grass seeds. Our school boards are putting the pieces back together. They voted on a budget that keeps our students whole. I hope that there are county commissioners here today that are listening to my story of hope and resilience, and they will not balance their budget on the backs of our students and our families. We need to fully fund the Asheville City and Buncombe County School Board budgets. It's what is right in the wake of this destruction. To continue to underfund my own children's school has terrible consequences. From the principals who are ringing up school lunches every single day, the loss of their STEM teacher, my autistic son's lack of a teacher's assistant in his classroom at seven years old, a critical time as students struggle and work hard to read, we know that these early supports set students on a path of success in reading and help foster appropriate behaviors in classrooms. One assistant split between six teachers is ridiculous. My children don't have doors on their classrooms. Their playground is destroyed. They need a new HVAC unit, and your underhanded way of trying to take away our capital outlay money for your own use is despicable. Combined with the clawback of nearly $5 million from our current year's budget is not in keeping with your campaign promises to support education. Our students and our schools have submitted their bare bones budget requests to maintain current services, make the right choice, and support my children on all the children of Buncombe County. The majority of your funding cuts are slated for education. You need to find a better way because our children and well-being and their learning is an essential service. No cuts, just honor your commitments. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Shanna Peel, and then Priscilla Nutt.
I think I'm the last one. Priscilla's not coming in, but good evening. Thank you for your time and for your service. My name is Shanna Peel. I'm a special education teacher in Buncombe County Schools, the proud mama of three amazing little humans, and proud to serve as the president of the Buncombe County Association of Educators. I was born and raised here. I attended Buncombe County Schools, and I've worked in Buncombe County Schools since 2008. So I know firsthand how every year our schools start with less and do more. I could tell you so many stories around this from being a student and a staff member, like how I am the only special education teacher at Woodfinn Elementary, and so that means that even though the spread of needs is the same, I'm the only one, so I do it all. Every year, I teach 10 to 11 classes every day and often am teaching kindergarteners with fourth graders in the same class because that's the only way all the kids officially get their IEP needs met. Or I could tell you a story about how one year I had a student with significant mental health and behavioral needs that had repeated violent episodes. After one of these difficult moments had just left me quite literally broken and defeated, I stepped out of my classroom to take a break, and our previous superintendent happened to be walking through our school at that moment. He saw me crying and bruised outside my classroom door and asked me what I needed, and I responded, "People, I need another person. This student needs so much more to be able to safely get through the day than I can provide." And his response was shocking but honest. "I know. We have seven open positions, and no one seems to want to apply. I wouldn't want to apply for a part-time behavior assistant position to get paid $17 an hour in these violent working conditions either." Yes, we could continue to do more with less. We can, and we will because that's our mission and that's why we're in education, but what is this doing for our kids? What is that doing for our community and our future adults who will be in our shoes, especially post-Helene, when we know our needs are only going to increase as we continue to heal? This is one of those moments that could define our kids' future, futures for better or for worse. Our students, our administration, and our staff are ready to do everything we can, and we need you to be all in and do everything you can to make sure our kids don't show up in August with less than they had before the hurricane. Additionally, I want to quickly add an additional ask that May 20th's budget hearing and commission meeting happens in a larger space. The overflow rooms are hard to hear in.
Thank you, Shanna. Thank you. You can share your comments with the clerk. Are there any folks here who did not sign up who wish to speak this evening? All right. Thank you. That concludes our public comment for the evening.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd love to propose a brief recess, just to regroup.
Regroup before the manager's presentation. We have consensus. Five minutes, five-minute regroup. All right. We will recess until 6:45. We'll be here right at 6:45 sharp. Are we back now? All right, we are out of recess at 6:50, and our next agenda item is the county manager's FY26 budget presentation, and she's being joined by Budget Director John Hudson. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I was waiting for the slide to come up. Thank you. And good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal year 2026 budget. Our budget process spans over eight months. So normally, we begin planning in late September, but the disaster preempted that, and our process was abbreviated. The department submitted budget requests by the end of January, and we came to you that month in a budget retreat where you agreed to focus our budget planning on recovery. We've held work sessions to project revenues for fiscal year '26, discuss requested expenditures, reviewed our fiscal year 2025 projections, and we heard our budget, our educational partners' request. All of that work helped me to get to this point tonight in crafting the manager's recommended budget. To be clear, this is staff's recommended budget, being presented for your consideration. A public hearing will be held at your next meeting on May 20th on the recommended budget. After the hearing, from our community and weighing all the amounts of revenues available, the board will then work to incorporate any changes it desires to reach a final adopted budget. For tonight's agenda, we will discuss the context for budget planning to include Tropical Storm Helene and our economic environment, while providing an overview on the budget, review our capital improvement plan, and a review of our other annually budgeted funds. This budget must be considered in the context of the state's worst natural disaster and the resultant economic condition. And the resultant economic conditions. Tropical Storm Helene made impact on September twenty-seventh. Unleashing a torrent of devastation on our community. Destroying over three hundred residences. Damaging or destroying three hundred and fifty bridges. Causing massive flooding and thousands of landslides and leaving eight thousand homes in need of repair. We know that Buncombe County will never be the same. Our neighbors responded the way that we would hope a community would respond. We received support from thirty-eight other estates. Staff worked around the clock for weeks without an effective county emergency operation system. We relocated and established our emergency operations centers three different times. We set up points of distribution. Operated a warehouse to provide food and water. Emergency shelters was established in multiple locations. And community care stations for residents to take showers and do laundry, access wifi. And also serve as warming centers during the cold winter months. The last care station was transitioned on April thirtieth to local resources. But staff still continues to focus on recovery operations. The storm also took an economic toll on our community as well. The unemployment rate surged and is still among the highest in the state. Doubling what it was before the storm. Thousands of businesses has applied for disaster assistance loans. And over a million dollars was seen in agricultural prop losses. One of our indicators, occupancy tax is projected to be down twenty-five percent from last year. And sales tax will be down as well from last year. Our property tax and collections are down this year. In addition to Helene, national economy and uncertainty about federal funding could have significant fiscal impacts. All of these factors presented the backdrop that we, as we develop this budget. Now move into the FY twenty-six budget overview. This budget maintains operations. Overall, it is a two-point-one percent decrease in expenditures from the amended FY twenty-six, twenty-five budget. There are no new positions in this budget. Reclassifying two vacant positions. One will be a recovery manager. And the second, an environmental plan reviewer to address floodplain concerns. As outlined in the budget ordinance, the budget includes a three-point-zero-nine percent cost of living adjustment for county staff. The budget also has revenue reductions of two-point-seven percent overall. But unrestricted revenue, that shrank almost three-point-five percent. Even with the reduction in expenditures, revenues are projected less. Throughout, therefore, to achieve a balanced budget. This budget recommends a tax increase of three-point-two-six cents. That is per one hundred dollars of assessed value. The total general fund budget is now four hundred and thirty-five million. Education continues to be our largest function at one hundred and twenty-one-point-eight million or twenty-eight percent. Public safety ninety-nine million, twenty-three percent. And human services closely behind at twenty-two percent or ninety-four, seven-point-four. These three functions represent seventy-three percent of the general fund budget. Education remains the largest portion of the budget at twenty-eight percent or again, one hundred and twenty-one million. This is a reduction from the FY twenty-five adopted budget. By that three-point-four-nine change in unrestricted revenue. You may recall in fiscal year twenty-two-four, we increased K- twelve funding. By sixteen-point-one million dollars or sixteen-point-five percent over unrestricted revenue rate. Of three-point-three-five percent for that year. This increase was supported by a one-cent tax increase. Leaving eleven million off the increase unsupported without a revenue source. With the FY twenty-two-four audited financial report. The county used eleven-point-one million of fund balance to finish the year. This allocation also includes a reduction then to the ABTEC of three-point-four-nine percent. So when you think about eleven-point-one million of use of fund balance. When we increase schools, I know we've had a lot of conversation tonight around the increase of schools and not funding of schools. But I'll submit, as you look on the screen and look at the slide. We have grown that budget over time in fiscal year twenty-two, ninety-four-point-six million. One hundred and four-point-nine in twenty-two-three, one hundred and twenty-one-point-four. So for FY twenty-two-six, we're actually basically flat in this recommended budget. Of note, there is some promising legislation that would provide funding for the K- twelve school system. That could be used to further fund this reduction. We have five operational functions that support the vast array of county services. Public safety function includes many of the services we relied upon in emergency response to the storm. And will continue to do so in recovery. This increases demand for emergency services. For our response, nine-one-one calls and community paramedicine. Human services include a full array of health and human services. And we have discussed increased demand here in Medicaid, foster care, food and lodging inspections and bail permits. General government function includes your property tax assessment as well as elections, general services of fleet and IT. And looking at the numbers here, we have tried to maintain close to flat in our budget as well. The increase you're seeing in public services. That is truly around the fact that we have always funded salaries at less than a hundred percent. Based on our turnover and our vacancy rates. For public safety, we're not seeing that turnover. So we had to budget them at a little bit higher than that ninety, we were usually around ninety-four to ninety-five percent. They're at ninety-seven percent in public safety, so that is the change you're seeing mostly in public safety. Economic and physical development includes planning, permits, ag and land, resources. And we know that this year, planning is going to prioritize the Swananoa Small Area Plan, which is funded in this budget. And again, if you look at the actual, what we have budgeted in that for them, from actuals to the amended. We're trying to make sure we stay flat or less. The same thing in culture and recreation, they have some more. Some more, that increases around some insurance and bonds as well as non-discretionary funding for parks and recreation. Move into our debt service and transfers. The debt service function for this year. It's eighteen-point-three million in debt service. This amount is debt payments for previously issued debt for capital projects, general obligation bond projects and vehicles. The capital projects discussed for the FY twenty-two-six budget is not reflected in these amounts. As that amount will not be impacted until future years. The inter-fund transfer, this year includes transfers to early childhood education. Conservation easements, transportation and economic development incentives. As mentioned in the overview for our personal ordinance, this budget includes the cost of living adjustments for county employees. That is calculated as a two-year average of the Consumer Price Index. And that formula generated a three-point-zero-nine percent COLA. To fund the four hundred and thirty-five million dollar budget expenditures. The three largest revenue sources are property tax at sixty-six percent. Intergovernmental at eleven percent. And sales tax at eleven percent. These three sources represent eighty-eight percent of our revenues, of our revenue base. Or three hundred and eighty-four million dollars in total. In North Carolina, local government's budget must be balanced. So for twenty-two-six, to achieve a balanced budget, I'm recommending a tax increase of three hundred and twenty-six cents. Resulting in a fifty-five-point-oh-two cents per hundred dollar valuation. This would result in one hundred and fourteen dollars in additional annual taxes. Or nine dollars and fifty-one cents a month to a home valued at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With the use of fund balance in fiscal year twenty-two-four of eleven-point-one million. And projected use of fund balance of a similar amount in FY twenty-two-five. We dip below the fifteen percent minimum available fund balance per policy. We are submitting our FEMA reimbursements and we are researching the application process with FEMA disaster loans. However, if additional assignment of fund balance to cover Helene. Prior to our reimbursement, this leaves us about eight-point-three projected available fund balance at year end. Therefore, there will be no available use of fund balance to balance the FY twenty-two-six budget. Additionally, we would utilize the FY twenty-two-six re-appraisal. To determine a sustainable tax rate that can help to restore fund balance. So this year, this percent increase for taxes is not to restore fund balance. We know that we will be lower policy. And we need to have a plan to repair that next year, but for this year, this is just to balance the budget. Moving to capital projects and vehicles. Continue our investments in facility maintenance and repair. However, with no expense impacted for twenty-two-six. I'm recommending five projects totaling four million. They're all debt financed. This includes major maintenance at the animal shelter. The courthouse and the detention center. And a bathroom replacement at late June. And there are three ambulances that we are re-committed to purchase last October because the lead time is so long. We had to get our purchase in. But again, this four million is all going to be debt financed and there's no expenditure impact in the current budget. We're also being very conservative in our approach to vehicle replacements this year. And we are debt financing or leasing public service vehicles for our sheriff's office. As well as three trucks in our inspections and solid waste. Beyond the general fund in our other fund categories. We will increase tonnage in the solid waste fee to increase revenues as we begin to plan for sale, construction. The reappraisal fund will support expenses, expenditures for the reappraisal. And conclude this four-year cycle of funding. The nine-one-one fund is a restricted revenue source. We will use these funds for training, software, equipment, maintenance and replacement. And lastly, the OPI settlement fund will continue harm reduction efforts as detail in our community supported that dual approach. Go to this. Would you go forward a little bit, John? Yes. So you heard from six fire departments who are requesting a tax rate increase to maintain operations. There are. The Asheville City Schools, you've heard that, but the fire districts are Anka-Candler. French Broad, Reynolds, Swananoa, Upper Harmony and West Buncombe. And they're all, they will be included in your budget ordinance. If this is the choice you make, as we discussed later, you can decide if you want to fully fund these taxes or not. To summarize our budget. Now you can go back to my summary. To summarize, the total of all annually budgeted funds is six hundred and twenty-four million dollars. For all annually budgeted funds, that includes your fire departments, that includes occupancy tax. The general fund portion of those annual funds is four hundred and thirty-five million. And we have requested a three-point-two-six cents property tax increase. All documents associated with the fiscal year twenty-two-six recommended budget. The proposed fee schedule are available with the day's agenda. The FY twenty-two-six budget explorer is an online tool the public can use to explore our budget in more detail. The next step is the required public hearing. The public is invited to share input on the recommended budget in person on May twentieth. At five P M, which is your next regularly scheduled meeting. After hearing from the community and weighing all available revenues. You will then work as a board to incorporate any changes as we move to a final adopted budget. I do want to say thank you for the opportunity to present the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-two-six. I look forward to the conversations over the next several weeks as we move forward to adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty-two-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Pender. We appreciate you presenting your budget and to John and your team for also working on this. We've had a long couple of months getting to this point. And Commissioners, as she mentioned, over the next few weeks. We'll have some opportunity for you to provide some additional input, comments, suggestions, changes to the budget directly to the manager. So please reach out to her as we move forward. And we do look forward to our public hearing in two weeks. And hearing from members across Buncombe County about our presented budget from the manager. Thank you so much. And John, I don't think you're, nope, Raphael's next, I was going to keep you up here. We have a consideration of the Reduce to Rebuild program and Raphael Baptista is joining us this evening.
Thank you Commissioners, good evening. Raphael Baptista, County Strategy and Innovation Director. Here to bring back to consideration for you all. And Adam, we talked about it at your last Commissioner briefing, which is a proposal around Reduce to Rebuild. Around building permit fees and planning fees related to damages from Tropical Storm Helene. We'll quickly talk through the request, some of the details around the proposal, revenue impacts. Then provide you all the opportunity to discuss and make a determination of how you want to move forward. The board action item for consideration is the Board of Commissioners consider a fee reduction of fifty percent. For Buncombe County residential permits associated with documented Helene. Damage or destroyed primary residences beginning June first of twenty-two-five. Going through December thirty-first of twenty-two-five. So the back half of the twenty-two-five calendar year. So when we're looking at properties that'd be eligible for this program, if were to be adopted. Would be a primary residence, so this is where the person living there is truly living there. And that the property received damage, as we saw the Tropical Storm Helene, that's been validated either by Buncombe County. Damage assessments done by a permits and inspection staff. Or by FEMA site inspections. And it is for repairs related to the damage, it is not for expansions and upgrades of the house. And it would only be for permits between that June first and December thirty-first time period. This is a note of regional comparisons. We did go back and reach out to these communities after the briefing to make updates. So Yancey County has shifted from no fees to normal fees. There were no fees when we last presented to you all, but they've started back up. But you can see that it's kind of a mixture of fees and no fees in our local areas. So this would be departmental fee reductions on the permits at fifty percent. Across air quality, permits inspections, planning, and then onsite wastewater, which is part of environmental health. So all the permits there and all those different departments would look to a fifty percent reduction. So this is a non-exhaustive list of some of the permits you could talk about. So these are going to be residential additions, renovations, retaining walls, demolitions. Asbestos-related things when talking about demolition. Septic inspections, new septic systems, septic repairs. The full fee schedule is linked below. But it is a pretty sizable amount of permits that could potentially be eligible for this program. So what we wanted to do is provide a little bit of context to help people understand. Kind of what is, you know, the overall cost to the county, but also what does this mean for individual property owners? So for most properties, if you're looking at from a minor repair job to full demolition and rebuild. The permit fees, all-inclusive, are going to be somewhere between three hundred and five dollars and one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Depending on the nature of the job and the size of the property. If you were to apply the fifty percent reduction, that profile would go down to a hundred and fifty-two dollars to nine hundred and forty-five dollars. You can see kind of by department here what those amounts are. The biggest amounts are going to be in your residential building permits because they have the most amount of permits. Just think how many times the inspector has to come out and inspect a construction project. Versus the one or two touches the planning department might make on it. Then air quality is also one that has larger amounts. And that's really going to be for demolition-related projects. Because the demolition permits are relatively exhaustive. So if you think about the fiscal impacts, it's important to consider that from around the time that Helene hit to the end of December of twenty-two-four. Per the disaster recovery after twenty-two-four, we were unable to collect any permanent revenue. We were only able to start recollecting permanent revenue beginning in January of twenty-two-five. We have seen a lot of permits that we would not have seen nevertheless. Without, if not for Helene, due to Helene. But our budget projections are that even with that increase in permits. It will not offset the loss of revenue for the first several months of the fiscal year. So this shows you kind of by department what the revenue projections are. So this shows you kind of by department what the revenue projections are. So the first column for each department is how much we budgeted for FY 25. So if we use permits as an example, they were budgeted to generate four point five million dollars in permit revenue. If we do not do reduce to rebuild and project out to the end of this fiscal year, the projection would be that they would generate about four point oh, four point oh eight million dollars. So about a drop of four hundred thousand dollars in revenue. If we were to implement reduce to rebuild, that revenue for them would drop down to about three point four eight million dollars. And then you can see air quality, planning and onsite wastewater, what those impacts are there. I will note that this is an area. As the Strategy and Innovation Director, I take a lot of pride in the data integrity that our team produces. And I'm almost always able to stand here with a lot of confidence in the number. I will tell you that with the sheer amount of data that we have and the differences in the way FEMA and the county look at damage assessments, the difficulty in understanding are people going to rebuild, are they going to repair, how that is. These are numbers that are very rough estimates. We have done the best we can with these, but please understand that these are most certainly estimates that we've produced for you all today. So net, kind of overall net picture, if we were to look at kind of the Helene-generated permit revenue, if you were to take no action today, we anticipate Helene permits would be somewhere between one point two and one point seven million dollars in revenue. If you were to apply reduce to rebuild, the number would drop to somewhere between six hundred and forty-one thousand and eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So pros of this would focus on rebuilding, aims to be narrowly tailored, aims to be economic competitive with peer counties. Some of the challenges related to this is the reduction in revenue, additional burden on staff, and the impacts should be felt over two fiscal years. And we're not quite sure how much would be in FY 25 versus how much would be in FY 26 additionally. So, yes. So I'll go back up and leave the request, the item for board consideration up. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Raphael. Questions from the commissioners?
First, I want to say this is awesome. You better have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On who qualifies slide?
Yes.
Here's A, B, C. Do they have to meet all of those qualifications?
Let me go back to the slide, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So A, the bullet A defines primary residence. So that's the first part of criteria. Bullet two indicates that there was damage from Helene, so it specifies what kind of damage is eligible. Then bullet C is the timeframe for which the permit was applied.
And then what will be used for documented Helene damage? Is that going to be through FEMA?
It'll be a combination of either FEMA or when the storm hit, a combination of our building inspectors and our planning department set out inspectors to do property assessments, but for floodplain assessments and building safety. So they'll look at those two systems and we have access to both systems. So what they'll have to do is identify a process for which when the permit gets applied, they'll have to look to see if that property was on one of those two lists.
Thank you.
And I have a question. It may actually be for our role. Should we pass this? Are you going to have to make an adjustment in the budget you just presented?
I believe that we've already made that adjustment. That's that question before, and I'm looking at John. We don't have to make an additional adjustment for this revenue source. He's saying yes. But the revenues would not impact generally.
Raphael said the math is challenging, but I think we should be okay.
Right. And commissioners, a special note, the permit revenue is restricted revenue, so that doesn't really impact general fund. The only one that really impacts general fund is planning, and that was a small amount. So, yes. I thought about that after he walked up. Sorry, John.
I'll make a motion to approve the fee reduction of the fifty percent of the Buncombe County residential permits associated with documented Helene damaged or destroyed primary residences beginning June first, 2025 and continuing until December thirty-first, 2025.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Wells made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Horton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion passes six to one. All right, we have budget amendments for project and grant closures. And I believe the next four items, John will be joining us. I did.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
The budget amendments for project and grant closures. It's a series of budget amendments that comprise the annual closure of capital projects, special projects and grants in the multi-year funds. The special projects fund amendment closes the comprehensive plan project, two affordable housing projects and seven conservation easement projects with a budget of four million dollars. Savings are being leveraged to support the Swananoa Small Area Plan and Conservation Easement Monitoring. Eleven projects are closed in the school capital fund, budgeted at six point seven million dollars. One thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars of bond savings will be returned to the fund for future use. Twenty grants are being closed in the grants fund, budgeted at six point seven million dollars. This amendment also addresses forty-nine thousand dollars in overages by using available balance in the grants fund. In the AB Tech Capital Fund, we're closing one project, the fiscal year twenty-two Hemlock Stormwater Project. A hundred fifty thousand dollar project, and there are no savings. On the school lottery projects fund, this amendment closes three projects, budgeted at one point nine million dollars, as well as closing the budget for sales tax already distributed to schools for forty-nine million dollars. The county capital projects fund, this amendment closes six county capital projects in the amount of eight point nine million dollars. Savings include one hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars of debt proceeds and two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars in interfund transfer revenue that will remain in the fund as existing project budgets are assessed. And the final one is the solid waste capital fund. Two projects totaling two hundred thousand dollars are closed by this amendment with nine thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars of savings remaining in the fund to offset future projects.
Are there questions for John?
John, did we get any feedback from any of the committees that do some of this work? Because I just want to make sure that we're not closing this out without checking with our partners.
Oh, we don't, any of these closures mean that no activity has happened since the prior fiscal year?
Okay.
And so we have consulted with all relevant partners with the school capital. The school capital commission has been consulted with regarding any closures in that fund. The school lets us know about the lottery project closures because we essentially pass through those dollars. So, and so, and then we've discussed the closures with all grant managers in the grants fund.
Got it. And I imagine if Dr. Jackson wanted to offer any objection, you could do that now, but. Thank you.
Can we approve these all in one motion or do we need to have separate?
I'd make a.
I have, it was one motion.
I just wanted to confirm.
It's a.
Is there another question? Go ahead.
You were good to do it in one motion.
One motion, okay. Just wanted to clarify. Go ahead, Vice Chair Moore.
In that case, I'll make a motion to approve all budget amendments as stated by John.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, Commissioner White side, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, amendments pass. Thanks, John. And you have more information on insurance rebates and an increase in budget for health claims.
Yes, this budget amendment is for the health insurance fund. And we will realize revenue from credits from stop-loss insurance and rebates in the amount of three million dollars to cover projected health claims. They're estimated to be about two and a half million dollars.
Are there questions? Not, do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Still moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Second by Commissioner Sloan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget amendment passes. All right, John. The floor is still yours for.
The budget amendment to appropriate fund balance for inmate medical care. This budget amendment will appropriate fund balance in the inmate commissary fund in the amount of seven hundred forty thousand eight four hundred sixty dollars. Five hundred seven thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars will be used to pay medical expenses for inmates being housed at other locations, principally in Raleigh. And two hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars will be used to pay excess medical expenses for outside care of those housed locally.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner White side, second by Commissioner Ball. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, budget amendment passes. One last budget amendment to increase Hurricane Helene funding.
This budget amendment will increase the current Hurricane Helene Grant Fund by eight million four hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred eleven dollars to thirty-seven point four million dollars. This will accommodate expenditures to include insurance claims, replacement of property, including the FEMA damage inventory, contracting costs for Tetra Tech, and allow for budgetary capacity for future permanent work.
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Wells.
And especially with what you've been showing us, you know, where you're concerned about fund balance and all that. And so I just, it would be helpful to have have some details around this, like to kind of break down, like where we are with this and then the expectation. I think you said you are, have you started applying to get some of the funds reimbursed yet?
I believe that's happening.
I believe that is happening right now, ma'am, as we speak. Did it go in already? Yes, she's giving me the thumbs up. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Because that's just something I feel like we're going to have to pay close attention to. And so, and why, I guess, the additional eight million? Can you speak more to why we're needing to go ahead and add an additional eight million to that? Because Tetra Tech, we'd already, that was one of the first things we allocated was funds for them.
Tetra Tech did recently have an increase of about six hundred fifty thousand dollars in contracting costs. And we have, we have been holding on to insurance claims costs for damaged property in the insurance fund. We need to move those expenses out of the insurance fund. I think we were a little hopeful when this all started that it would, as the insurance fund's an annual fund, that we would be working through that in time for the fiscal year to close. But obviously, we have to move those insured items and the replacement of, and have budgetary capacity for the replacement of those items in the Helene fund. So some of the revenues that we balance against will be insurance claims.
And am I interrupting you?
No, you go ahead.
And you say some, do we know what that number is?
Those are still coming in almost daily or weekly.
It's just a constant moving target.
I mean, yes, there were seventy vehicles.
Yeah.
I mean, there were, there are a variety of like different, different facilities. And so as we work through those claims and then how much the insurance pays and how much is that the replacement cost? Or do we need to have additional budget presumably reimbursed by FEMA to cover the costs of replacement?
And now it's my turn. The additional for Tetra Tech, that's like you said, six hundred and forty-five thousand or so. I think you may have mentioned that before, but can you, I just want to make sure that it's what I'm thinking it is. Can you speak to that again?
I don't have that in front of me, but I believe Rachel brought that to the board a couple of weeks ago.
I think, I don't remember all the details, but I do, it is, it was around program management for some of the things that we know would not be reimbursed. But we would bring that, let me get that and get the details back to you. I don't remember it off the top of my head. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd appreciate some more details. I mean, and you can email it out to us all if that works. But just to have some more details, especially with us really needing to track that so closely. I'd just like to have a better understanding.
Are there any additional questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
Still moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball, second.
Second.
Commissioner Sloan, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Budget amendments pass. Thank you, John. We appreciate it. Mason Scott is joining us to discuss the FY 2025 audit contract. Evening, Mason.
Good evening. I am pleased to bring, I think, the most exciting topic tonight. State law requires that we have an annual independent financial audit. So tonight I'm bringing to you the current year's contract for financial audit for your consideration. As a quick reminder, we have been working with Malden and Jenkins as an accounting firm for, since 2023, when we made that selection through a competitive process, they gave us the base pricing for the first three years. That base pricing includes the core financial audit, but also includes the special audit of five grant programs. And those programs are selected based on certain spend thresholds and risk analysis. You'll see that first three years of pricing at the bottom of this slide. And notice that I've struck out year three, what would be this year and the pricing. We've had some really effective and beneficial conversations with Malden and Jenkins over the last few weeks. They have been a great partner for the three years that we've been working with them so far. They are interested in supporting our recovery process, recognize that we are kind of in a special position right now. So what you see on the screen right now is a revised proposal change from what they gave us three years ago. They are holding the base cost level with what we paid last year for that core financial audit, plus the first five additional programs. The second line, additional programs there, we have gone over based on threshold requirements and the number of audited programs required over the last few years. And so they have given us confirmed and locked significantly reduced pricing for up to an additional four grant programs. That is notably below what they have charged us in the past for one or two additional programs. So the number I'm presenting to you tonight for consideration of this contract is a number not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And note that we would only pay the one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars unless for some reason more than five grant programs needed to be audited this year. So pausing in case there are any questions there.
And that was approved by the audit committee.
So I want to walk through that next. The audit committee actually approved a larger number than that. So on April first, we talked to the audit committee and originally presented the original proposal that included the price that they gave us three years ago. In the meantime, between then and now, we had conversations in Malden and Jenkins, and they agreed to the reduced pricing. That was communicated back to the audit committee, an approval that was tacit in that it was under the original not to exceed amount. And so we have drawn those numbers down to the contract that is being presented to you today. Continuing this timeline, we have a kickoff meeting scheduled next week. We'd go ahead and get to work. Per usual, we would look to have the audit completed no later than November thirtieth. And ideally presenting to you the audit no later than January. But if we can make the meetings work and weather trees as well, we'll talk to you in December. I also want to note here that the bulk of the work will be done in fiscal year 26. So there may be some minor de minimis kind of audit-related expenditures closing out this year, but we are putting the bulk of the budget in what you've seen for fiscal 26. So request tonight is for that lower number for you to consider an audit contract in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Any further questions for Mason?
Just a really quick one. How many grant programs do we handle in any given year? Are we looking like we're likely to run over or right off the bat?
Not necessarily. So I think the audit committee has asked this question in the past. It depends on the year and it is in the teens. So I would say likely sub hundred. It also depends on how you look at them. There is a special section in the back of our annual comprehensive financial report. It's called the CISA, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal and State Awards. And it is several pages of the specific listings of the programs by number. Depending on how we group them in our reporting or our budget, you could call it sixty or you could call it two hundred and ten. But there are several. The basic rules are any more than five hundred thousand dollars in state funding and any more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding. Those thresholds are actually going to move up. And then from there, based on the specific programs, there are some determinations based on risk. The five base number for grants made sense to us at the time, but we have seen between six and eight audited programs over the last two years.
Motion to approve the audit contract with Malden and Jenkins in the amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand.
Second. Sorry. For Commissioner White side?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner White side, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, contract approved. Thank you, Mason. Thanks for hanging in there with us this evening. All right, we do have some board appointments to make this evening. We'll start with our planning board. We have one reappointment and one new appointment, and we had a significant amount of applicants and some really great interviews. So this is, this is going to be a tough choice, I think, this evening. I will start with the reappointment of Ken Khan. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ken Khan to the Buncombe County Planning Board.
Second.
Sloan and Wells, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Ken Khan is reappointed, and we will, I'm going to shake things up on the day this, this evening. I'm going to start with Commissioner White side's on his selection for planning board.
If I may, Madam Chair, just wanted to note, Pat Deck removed her name from consideration.
Yes, she did. There's, there were several others on this one that was provided.
I've thought about this, and I'm going with Jess Gardner because he's, to me, the most qualified that we have on there, and I think that's critical to me. And especially in the time that we, what we're going through now, we need him. He's a civil engineer, and he brings so much to the table. I don't think we can let him get away.
Great. Commissioner Horton?
I'm going to agree. I'm going to go with Jess Gardner because he brings a lot of wisdom and, and to the table at such a time as this.
Great. All right, Commissioner Moore?
I'm going to go with Liza.
All right, Commissioner Ball?
Uh, I'll also go with Liza Sheila.
Parker Sloan?
I will, as well, choose Liza Sheila.
All right, Commissioner Wells?
I will. Report Liza.
And Liza Shiloh for me as well. And I, so Liza Shiloh, five, Jesse, two, and I think that we were reaching out to some of these applicants to invite them to apply to the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And I think we've got some folks in this, in this applicant pool that we hope to see come forward to us in a few months as well. Thank you all.
Commissioner Wells? If we can, can we like come up with like a pattern in a way that, like if we're going to change up how we do thing, like the cycle? Like, we'll go there, then there. I mean, you get what I'm saying, like, like Wells might be the one that we start with this week. Parker with the next vote. That way we can ensure fairness and transparency.
Okay.
It's transparent when we vote.
But what I-
Yep. The vote is the transparency.
I, I think that all I'm saying is that if we're going to switch it up, let's be consistent in how we choose to switch it up. That's transparent when, like Terry, then the next time it's Parker, then the next time it's Drew, and-
Somebody's going to have to keep me on track with that. I usually-
I can do it.
Somebody will have to keep me on track.
I won't. I can't.
Because I'm not going to remember, I can be honest. We just try to give someone different an opportunity to start every time.
Madam Chair, may, may I just echo your sentiment? I just want to flag that we had some incredibly talented people step up for this.
Yeah, we did. We had some good people.
And people gave their time to come and, to not only apply, but to be interviewed. And I think I speak for all of us when I say we were blown away by some of the talent that stepped up, and it's really humbling to see folks that want to serve the community like this. And so for anyone who was not chosen and did not move forward, we really do hope they will continue to apply because there's some really great talent in this pool.
Very well said. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ball, for that. All right, we also interviewed that day two folks for our Historic Resources Commission, and we do have two appointments, and that's Bill Roberts and Robert Scobie, and I think he actually goes by a different name than Robert Scobie. Do we have a motion to appoint the two of them?
Still moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Approved those two. We also, we had a full day that day. We interviewed Jeremy Plemons for the Asheville Board of Adjustment seat, and we do have one appointment to make. Do we have a motion to approve Jeremy Plemons?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Second by Commissioner Sloan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we've appointed Jeremy Plemons. We have our Agriculture Advisory Board for Farmland Preservation, and we do have two reappointments. Do we have a motion to approve Steve Duckett and Anne Greer? Thank you, Commissioner Wells, second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner White side. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, approved.
One more.
And we have one more over here. We have one appointment for our Health and Human Services Board. Donna Mann, who is a retired social worker, has applied. Do, and she is recommended by the HHS folks. Do we have a motion to approve Donna Mann?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner White side. Second by Commissioner Horton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Donna Mann will fill a four-year term with HHS.
Manager?
Yes.
I have a thought on the, or a, a thought for the clerk to think about on just the matter of board appointments.
Mm-hmm.
I- i- in relation to what Commissioner Balda said, we have these great applicants. I'm trying to, I'm thinking out loud at this point, but when we have these great applicants and we interview them, perhaps there's a way for the clerk to save some of these names and resumes and applications in some sort of organized fashion, because obviously people apply for all kinds of unrelated things. A, a database for us to, to, to look for, look through when we're creating these committees that we can be like, you remember that great person that we didn't appoint to that committee? And we can like kind of look them, look them up and maybe reach out to them, that sort of thing.
I'll piggyback on that idea. Not only do I think that's a great idea, I think we should, when we're redoing the website, I know that's a continuous thing, if we could put a checkbox somewhere to say I'd be open to other boards, that might be really helpful, so that way we can reach right out to them and give them consent before we start calling folks, saying, hey, we volunteered you for five more boards.
Is that something you think you and Stacy can, okay, we'll talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, because I think right now you have to apply for each vacancy, so that, that might be helpful as folks are applying, that they'd be interested in others. I like that suggestion. All right, are there any updates from members of the Board of Commissioners?
Just one. I was excited to see, email went out today. We're going to allocate our early childhood education money. A lot of programs have been asking, so thank you to Avril and staff and for giving us Rachel back to handle one more job.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, flag for the community that Commissioner Sloan and I will be hosting, hosting a coffee shop office hours, a coffee chat. And that's the next one that we are doing together for District Three. It will be at Battle Cat Coffee on Tunnel Road on May 13th, which is next week, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And you get two commissioners for the price of one, which is free, coming out.
Great.
I have one thing.
Yes.
So I will be in Fairview at Cultivated Cocktails on May the 29th, 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., doing a community, um, meeting. And I will continue throughout District One with the, with the community meetings, so.
Great. All right, any other updates? Commissioner Ball and I serve on the LEPC, the local, May the 29th, at Cultivated Cocktails. Commissioner Ball and I serve on the Local Emergency Planning Committee. We had our quarterly meeting yesterday with a number of folks in the emergency services world, as well as a lot of our own county staff yesterday. And I think my big takeaway was we've really started as that group to look at lessons learned from emergency response and how partners came together during Helene. And I just want to leave you all with, one of, one of our county staff really made a, a comment that has stuck with me as I've headed into today, specifically listening to the county manager's budget presentation, is that the county staff's role in Helene was to serve every single resident of Buncombe County and to take care of the needs that they have. And so many of our staff, and we heard from them yesterday in LEPC, had to put aside their own personal destruction and tragedy to serve the county at large. And it, I, I'm emotional as I think about that and what our thousands of county staff have had to go through to take care of every resident in Buncombe County who had a need. And I, I don't want anyone to ever think that we are not truly grateful and appreciative for you all putting your own lives on pause to take care of, of everyone else. And we see you and you hear you, and we are so incredibly grateful and lucky to have a staff who cares so deeply about the residents of this county. And as we move forward through our own budgeting process, I hope that we, we don't lose sight of our job as commissioners as to also take care of every resident in Buncombe County. And I appreciate the opportunity that we were, we were able to be in that small group yesterday and hearing from, from our staff. And look forward to continuing to work with LEPC. That's the Local Emergency Planning Committee to continue learning lessons in terms of how we become more resilient and more responsive as, as a community. So thank you all to our staff. Are there any other updates? All right, couple of quick announcements. Our next briefing and regular meeting will be on May 20th at 3:00 p.m. We do have a public hearing for our proposed budget, and that will be held at May 20th at our 5:00 p.m. meeting. And I know we have a need for a closed session, and Kurt Ulller has the motion for us.
Yes, commissioners, I will need a motion to go into closed session for two reasons. The first one is to consult with an attorney retained by the public body to pertur- to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and public body to consider and give instructions concerning the handling of a worker's compensation claim, NCIC File Number 22048198. There will be no formal action at this time. The statutory authority is contained in General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A3. And also, the second reason is to discuss matters regarding a local location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the Board of Commissioners, including an agreement on tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered in negotiations, provided that any action authorizing the payment of economic development incentives will occur in open session. I do not believe there will be any formal action taken at this time. The statutory authority is contained in General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A4.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Still moved.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Moore. Second by Commissioner Sloan. We will not anticipate taking any formal action, so we will adjourn from our closed session. We are in closed session. Thank you.